Okay, we are up. So I'll call to order this meeting of the Board of Selectmen, June 2nd, 2015. And first order of business, before I start, we did have an executive session planned at the beginning of the meeting. If anybody objects, we'll move that executive session for Governor Stoughton to the end of the meeting, but we'll still do items two and three in the order they're in. Does that sound okay to everybody?
Meeting at the end of the meeting?
I was going to do two and three now, and the executive session at the end of the meeting. Does that make sense?
The agenda got revised to move them to the end, but...
Oh, okay.
I would suggest, Mr. Chairman, that you do the Selectmen open items and then move to your Governor Stoughton meeting, do your opening, your executive, and then go back.
Again, it doesn't really matter to me, whichever order we want to take them in. So, if that's fine with everybody, that's fine with me.
It's fine with me.
Okay. Okay. Then, let's see, item one on the agenda is, or item two on the agenda is approval of minute meetings from March 24th, March 31st, April 7th, and April 29th.
Can we defer the April 29th minutes until the next meeting? I think there's typos that need to get corrected.
That's fine.
So I'll move that we approve the following meeting minutes as written, March 24th, March 31st, and April 7th, 2015.
And I'll second that.
Motion been made to second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all's in favor?
Aye.
Okay, unanimous. Confirmation of future meeting dates. Right now, we have June 16th, and we did have a June 30th that was going to be, are we still going to do? I can't do a June 30th, really.
Okay.
I'm not around, so I can, I've got a real heavy travel schedule the end of June.
Right now, we don't have any items for the June 30th, Mr. Chairman, so we can, we can just have the June 16th at this point, and on June 16th, talk about future meeting dates for July.
Okay, well, we can talk about July now if you want. If you want to do two in July.
I'm pretty open for July right now.
Yeah, I agree with you. So, let's see, we have the 7th and the 21st.
Those are good for me.
Yeah.
Okay.
Good.
Let's see, approval of payroll and vendor warrants.
Okay, I'll move that we approve the current payroll and vendor warrants.
Second.
Motion been made to second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all's in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Item five, a citizen speak. Do we have anybody that wants to speak? Yes, sir. Could you just state your name and address, please?
All right. By way of introduction, if you don't know me, my name is William Kringle. I live on Elliott Street across from Steel &amp; Rye. As members of the Milton community, my wife and I are very supportive of local business, whether it's Suzanne Lombardi with the plate, Dan Carrigan, who we have a great relationship with at Steel &amp; Rye. And I preface my remarks with this because I am not anti-business in my neighborhood, and I want to make that perfectly clear. That said, while I'm thrilled with the business in my community, I'm not thrilled with my government. You failed to provide me with a voice, and I'm growing incredibly frustrated with my efforts to have my issue heard. During the fall last year, I reached out to Katie Conlin to discuss the parking situation on Elliott Street. Parking, when we purchased the property, we purchased a month after Steel &amp; Rye opened, was not like it is today. It was not as busy. It's since become one of the top 50 restaurants in Boston and highly acclaimed, been featured on national television shows, and continues to get great notoriety in the press. So, parking has continued to become a problem, not only from an availability standpoint, from someone who does not have off-street parking, one of only two homes that doesn't have off-street parking on Elliott Street, but it's also become an issue from a public safety standpoint. As I'm sure you're aware, with the snow that we had this winter, at one point, there were two MBTA buses that could not pass themselves, a line of cars trying to get into Steel &amp; Rye, and an ambulance that couldn't get through. So Katie and I communicated multiple times via email and via phone, and we discussed potential solutions to the problem. Finally, after a number of significant communications throughout the year and into early this year of 2015, we agreed to meet the town administrator, myself, and the chief of police regarding this issue. Two meetings in a row were canceled because of the snow. No one's fault whatsoever. This was an incredible winter, and we kept scheduling meetings on days that we'd have blizzards. So I suggested, as a reasonable, the reasonable person that I am, mind you, this is my first time before the board on this issue, and it's been over a year, was to punt on the meeting until the spring. I said, "Let's wait till you get the even more pressing public safety issues addressed, snow removal taken care of, and all the pressing issues that are on your plate." So I proceeded to reach out to Ms. Conlin in the fall. Mind you, I was in touch with Ms. Conlin because that's who the Selectmen's office had put me in contact with initially over a year ago. Reached out multiple times to reschedule our meeting, never got a response. Finally, I reached out directly to the Selectmen's office, and I said, "Listen, I understand Ms. Conlin's very busy, I'm busy as well, but I need to have some kind of a resolution brought to this matter." I waited another month, never heard anything. Reached out again, and I was told, "Well, the police chief is working on a solution to this, and he should be in touch with you soon." I received that email today. I will just pass this around. I brought copies for everyone on the board. We could enter this into the record. So, the police chief notes pursuant to my concerns that a public commission of the traffic committee came together, and they reached a conclusion regarding my situation. This is quite disturbing. First of all, the town never notified me that the concern that I initiated was going to meet before a public hearing, which is required by law. Then, I was not involved in what the chief calls "an investigation." He says, quote, "Our investigation of your request did reveal that your vehicle is parked on the property of 95 Elliott Street." First of all, what water can this investigation hold if no one spoke to me? If no one came and saw the parking situation during peak business hours? So, in addition to not being involved in the process, the investigation is severely To that end, the police chief says that their investigation found that I had an agreement with Steel &amp; Rye that I could park overnight. This is not true. I know Dan Carrigan very well. I spoke with him today after speaking with the town administrator. This was never communicated to the town administrator by Dan Carrigan. What he said was, "When there is space, he tries to accommodate people in the neighborhood and doesn't say, 'No, you can't park in my lot.'" That doesn't solve my problem. That doesn't solve the problem that my wife and I have parking, or my neighbor has parking. So apart from materially misrepresenting my concerns, there are a number of other issues in addition to not being notified. If the police chief was going to investigate a robbery, wouldn't he talk to the person who reported it? I'm the one who's about to complain. Police chief never came out to my property to see the situation, never spoke to me. I didn't get response from Ms. Conlin. I never had any kind of notice to go to the public hearing. And they overlook a number of issues here. When Steel &amp; Rye does have a spot that I'm able to take, I'm tipping valets at my own expense. That's part of the reason they sometimes go out of their way to try to get me a space. I have to pay to park at my property where I have on-street parking because there's no parking available to residents. In addition, what is also disturbing and concerning and really highlights some of the incompetence of the different people interacting with each other with my complaint is that the police chief says, "We've approved the curb cut." So first of all, I'm a graduate student. I'm in a PhD program. I don't have the money to pay to put in an expensive retaining wall in two off-street parking spots at a house that I was fortunate enough to be able to purchase at the age of 26. Okay? That said, let's say I did have the money. Let's play that game. Why did they just pour sidewalks last week? They poured sidewalks, and now they're saying, "You can cut them up and put in a parking space." That defies common sense. So I'm going to cut up expensive brickwork and sidewalk when we could have coordinated? So I'm incredibly concerned, and what concerns me even more is the pattern of failure to involve property owners with their concerns. When I first moved in, there was parking along Morton Road. Mysteriously, overnight, the signs appeared, "No parking." I was never notified, as a resident of the neighborhood, that they were removing parking from Morton Road. I was never allowed to voice my concern that removing six, maybe eight, spaces from the neighborhood surrounding Steel &amp; Rye would adversely impact my availability to park, not to mention adversely impact the business. I won't get into the conflict of interest issue that I'm aware of in that case, but what I will say is that I should have been notified. Our neighborhood should have been notified, not just the people that raised the concern. It's kind of ironic that they raise a concern, there's no public hearing. I raise a concern, there's a public hearing that I'm not invited to, and an investigation that I'm not a part of. Finally, after speaking with the town administrator today, and this is why I am sitting here today, instead of waiting to hear back from the town administrator, I received a call from the police chief. When I spoke to the town administrator, I said, "Listen, I'm a reasonable guy. It's been over a year. Take your time. Let's figure this out. Dan, right now, is going out of his way for the past week and a half to let us park there because of the construction." Mind you, the chief investigated me recently and said, "I'm parking in his lot," yes, because there's no on-street parking either now. It's not taken up by the restaurant. There's construction all along Elliott Street, which you're well aware of. If he had involved me, he would have known that. So he says to me in a voicemail after I spoke with the town administrator, "Mr. Kringle, I've done all I can do for you legally. Just end on this point. I find that quite comical. He's done all he can do for me legally. Is he implying that he wants to do something different, or that there's something else he could do? Or is he implying that not properly notifying me of a public traffic hearing or traffic commission, which he's the chairman of, is within the letter of the law? I don't think so. I may only be 26 years old. I may be a new property owner to the town, but I am, I am not someone who can be treated like this. This is unacceptable, and I'm not just going to go away because people ignore me for extensive periods of time. All that said, I hope that in the coming days, the town reaches out to me and engages with my wife and I as they should have from the beginning when they convened a public hearing that they didn't invite me to."
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to respond to a little bit of that. Normally, you wait until citizen speak response, but I had numerous emails and phone calls with Mr. Kringle going back last fall. I had some follow-up discussions with the town administrator and with the chief of police. There are many, well, maybe not many, it's probably not there, but there are other homes in town that do not have a driveway and where on-street parking is an issue. And in discussions with the police chief and the town administrator, what I communicated to Mr. Kringle is that if we were to adopt some kind of a policy, it would be a townwide policy, and that we can't just discuss, you know, one particular property. We'd have to take into account other properties that are in the same situation. I know that the Steel &amp; Rye situation complicates this area, but there were many follow-up conversations. I did not know that the chief had not communicated regarding the traffic commission, and I don't know that to be true. I know you've said that. I'd have to follow up with the chief on that to know what the discussion was, but we did agree, we postponed, including, I think, at Mr. Kringle's request, one of the more recent ones, we postponed some meetings in the winter because of the snow. We decided that it made more sense for the police chief to take the matter on himself and to bring this before the traffic commission and to handle it at that point back in probably the February, March timeframe. So I did get a copy of this email today, and I have not, it came over late this afternoon from the town administrator, so I have not had a chance to follow up on it, but, but...
I would just...
Excuse me, I'm speaking. There's been a lot of discussion on this. It's a complicated issue, and it's, it's something that, again, there would need to be a townwide policy. There are other homes on busy streets that are in this situation that do not have a driveway. I believe, I'd have to go back and check my notes, I believe the issue of the curb cut was that the prior owner who sold the house to Mr. Kringle had applied for a curb cut, and an approval was granted. And so that issue had already been in existence. Mr. Kringle had indicated to us during some conversations that he was not in a position at this time to be putting in a driveway, but the curb cut is a possibility for the future because it had already been, been issued. The police chief, I know, did go out last summer to view the property, and there's a neighboring property that's in the same situation. So that's probably all I want to say about it right now, but there's been a lot of follow-up on this, and I know Mr. Kringle is not satisfied that we haven't yet come up with a solution, but it's, this is a complicated issue because there are other homes in other parts of town that are in the same situation, and we're going to have to look at a townwide policy for this. It's not an easy, if there were, if there were an easy fix to this, we would have come up with it already, but there isn't an easy fix, unfortunately. So, so I think there's more that we can probably continue the conversations. I'm happy to meet with Mr. Kringle, or now that you're the chair of town, maybe you'd like to get involved in it. I think we should follow up with the police chief about the traffic commission hearing, but there's been an awful lot of communication on this issue, and I don't want the implication to be out there that we haven't responded. We certainly have responded. There's, there's lots of emails on this, there's been phone calls, and unfortunately, the winter was what it was, and that did cause some delays.
Mr. Kringle, just...
I'd like to enter one thing into the record since we broke Robert's rules and moved forward to the...
Okay, if you can do it very quickly.
Very briefly, okay? There is ample documentation going back to April of this year that I've been trying to reconnect with Ms. Conlin. There were no subsequent phone calls from her. The chief himself, in the letter, that's not true, the chief in the letter himself says that, "Oh, by the way, there was this traffic commission. It's clear the implication from the letter that I was not notified." And more to the point, it's been more than a year. I've been very patient, and I've reached out multiple times within the past two months to the various offices within the town, the administrator, including the police chief today. So I think the evidence is clearly, clearly supporting that I am a very reasonable man, and I appreciate that Ms. Conlin may be very busy. If she felt that is no longer the chair, it wasn't her duty or, or within her agenda to get back to me, she could have easily have passed this on to the chairman or to the town administrator. But there were no, no responses to any of my emails to reconvene our meeting. I did not cancel a meeting. Two meetings were canceled because of snow, one of which I wasn't copied on until the last minute, and I reached out and said, "That's fine. Let's punt till the spring. I am eminently reasonable, and I want to make sure that that's on the record going forward as I'm dealing with the town. I am incredibly reasonable, and I have ample documentation to this effect." Thank you.
Okay, I just want to say two quick things. Number one is, if you'd like, tomorrow night, we are having a, a neighborhood meeting on Central Ave, safety issues, safety concerns, even though you're not really, you're Elliott Street, I mean, it is the Central Ave area. If you'd like to come to it, be my guest, and that's, what, 6:30?
6:30 at the Keys Conference.
Keys, which is the library conference room downstairs in the library. Other than that, you know, this is not the appropriate time to try and resolve this issue with a selectman's...
Absolutely not.
But, but we will take it up.
Yep. I appreciate that. That's all I ask, and I've been asking for a year.
Anybody else for citizen speak? Okay. Lily, how you doing?
Good evening.
How you doing?
What do you think?
It's that time of year again.
It is.
It's not Christmas. But it's better.
Yeah, that's right here.
We think it is. So I'm Lynda Lee Shart, I'm from Clifton Road.
Brian Kelly from Hope Am.
And we are the co-chairs of We Are Milton, and we're here to tell you, as you just said, it's that time of year again, that we have our wonderful Milton Music Fest and fireworks and Celtic Sunday coming up the end of June. So we just want to give you a little overview of the exciting events that we have planned and hope that people that are watching at home will hear about it and plan to come out and join us. So, want to kick it off, then?
Okay, so Saturday, June 27th, we're starting at 3 o'clock. We're kicking off at 3 o'clock. We're going to end somewhere around 10:30 when it's nice and dark, but we have a great line of entertainment, and this is a great opportunity for some of the Milton performers to be showcased, so we're excited about that. We have, we have one gentleman, Will McMillan, from the group called The FMs, there's two of them, and he's at Milton High School, and he's been invited to some other music festivals. He's quite an entertainer, and he's just kind of getting started, and so he's excited to be coming on this, on the big stage, as we say. We have a gentleman named John Lucas. He goes to the Academy, lives in West Quincy, which overlooks Milton, and he's with a group that they, the Fugitives, the, I forget the name of the group that he's with, but they opened for the Dropkick Murphys at the House of Blues, and, but that's more of a punk-rock type of thing, so, but he's a great singer, so him and one other gentleman are going to come over and play more family-type songs at the, at our festival. But it's an opportunity for people to get to know him better, and again, another high schooler. We have Jenna Lotti. Jenna Lotti, some of you might have read about her in the paper. She's been in the Boston Globe, she's been on all the radio stations, she's an up-and-coming great performer, and she has a great story. Some of you know her from her softball career at Milton High and in university, but she's just exploding on the music scene, and we're excited for her, and she's very excited to be on, to be on the stage with her boyfriend Chris Pacey and their band, so you'll see Jenna there. And we are on Milton Cable, so it's really Jenna Bortalati, but her stage name is Jenna Lotti. The Neville sisters are coming back, and most of the folks that are watching this will be familiar with the Neville, with Caitlin and Kelly, and we're excited to have them back, a little bit of country and a little bit of rock and roll, you know, a little bit of everything, and they're just awesome. Joel Hiller Band is going to be here this year. Joel has a history, he used to make spots for radio spots, like jingle, radio jingles and things like that, but he's got a great group of people that are going to come up and just, real soulful kind of music, you're going to just sit back and enjoy them. And then we have the open, open mic review from, open mic review for the Milton Arts Center. So they've been just very excited about this event, and we've been going to some of their open mics down at the Arts Center in East Milton, and so they have put together some of the performers, some of their key performers who are going to perform. For example, Zip Zap and the Zops, it's a five-piece jazz band from the high school. I believe Colette Norrie will be playing a song or two. Frank Graham has been instrumental in helping us out, so she's got a group, Frank Graham with Claudia Wellington from town, Kevin Danbrook, and Steve Cousino, so they all get up and sing. And oftentimes, last year actually, some of the people from the audience got up and sang with them also, so we're excited about them. Lynda Lee will tell you about the other performers on Saturday night.
I don't know if we said where this is going to take place, but it's...
Where is this going to take place?
This will be at Hutchinson Field, and over, so off of Adams Street, for anyone who doesn't know, coming from East Milton Square down to Lower Mills, and that beautiful field that overlooks the city of Boston. And it will start, these events will start around 3 o'clock in the afternoon and go right through till dark when the, when the fireworks will go off. So after all of the great things that Brian has described, we will be having a kids' karaoke, which was a huge favorite last year because the kids were just so adorable. Anyone that was in the, on the field and wanted to come up and perform could sing, and they were just great. Following that, we'll have a group called The Eight Tracks, and this is a big band. They have brass, they have two, a female and male singer. They're just really, really talented.
Wait a minute, the what? What did you say? The Eight Tracks?
Did I call them The Eight Tracks? No?
Yeah, The Eight Tracks, that's, that's the...
Oh, The Ward Eight's. I always do that.
Go back to the, go back to The Eight Tracks, because that's first.
I'm sorry.
That's the, the, what do you call them?
They both have "eight" in their names.
No, we got, we got "eight," I'm going to say to that.
Sorry.
So The Eight Tracks, what are they? They're the...
They're acapella.
Acapella.
So they're great, too. And then I should put my glasses on. And The Ward Eight's, I just described to you, they're fabulous. Jackson Blue from the radio station is going to be there again, being our emcee for the night, and he brings a lot of liveliness to the celebration of the day. And the end of the evening, just before the fireworks come on, we, we are very excited to welcome the New York City Emerald Society Pipe and Drum Band, which will be quite impressive as they march onto the field and up onto the stage, and it's going to be a huge stage that overlooks the city. So it's really a full evening of festivities, and we're very excited to present it, but that's not all, because there are lots of activities that will be going on throughout the day, on the field, on the street. There'll be food, there'll be food trucks and things that you could purchase. There'll be art and artisans that will be on display throughout the day. Local artisans will be there performing, showing their wares. We'll have touch-a-truck, oh, tell us about touch-a-truck.
Touch-a-truck, Jimmy Tasciantonio from Towntree is helping us out with touch-a-truck. Last winter, I got to ride in the payload, and we got, it was a lot of fun, so I know the kids are going to love it, because I loved it. Okay, so they're going to bring some of the trucks, equipment to the field, but we're also going to bring some antique military vehicles. We already have a British tank from World War II coming. It's unbelievable, so, so, so like, from 3:00 to 5:00, or 3:00 to 6:00, depending on how long I can keep them here, they're going to, they're going to come over to the event, so that's going to be awesome.
Kids can climb on them and touch them and...
Fruit Center Sunday, I think they're tractor-trailer, and they think they put a slide off the back, the kids can run in the back and then slide down the back, so...
My kids are watching. I don't know if they're going to get to bed now after all this.
So plan on staying for the whole evening, you know what I mean, the afternoon and the evening, and it's, you know, there'll be ice cream, fireworks, there'll be blow sticks and stuff like that.
Face painting.
Face painting, the Art Museum is going to do some face painting, some other crafts. The trustees of reservations are going to be there, and they're going to be running some different things, so people are interested in the land and a little bit of the back of the place. They'll be having a table there, and they'll have some activities, so that's going to be great. And then what about Sunday?
Well, it gets bigger and better every year.
Or the fireworks, right after the Emerald, the fireworks.
Fireworks will be going off from the river, and they will be set to music, and it's quite spectacular. It's our, our version of the Fourth of July right here in Milton.
If you ever come back from the boat...
Yeah, I know, I do like going there.
She goes out on the boat to get the CD from these guys.
Okay.
So we can play the music. Okay, we can go. So Sunday, we have a whole afternoon of festivities, starting at 1:00 and going through till about 8:00 PM. It will be a whole Celtic Sunday, and we have Aaron's Melody, we have the Phineon Sons, Patsy Whelan and Paul Kenny, who, if you follow Irish music, they're pretty well-known, our own Pauline Wells and Devery, and we are really excited to offer or present this year Gaelic Storm as our headliner, and they are coming to us direct from Ireland. They actually are the band that performed on the Titanic, so, in the movie The Titanic, so it should be...
They didn't go down with the Titanic.
No, they didn't.
The movie Titanic.
Not quite that old.
And again, there'll be food and lots of fun, and it's a family, bring your chairs, bring your blankets, there's food to buy, a pack of picnic, so it's a, it's really a great community event.
It's going to be totally awesome, so really, make it, don't, folks, don't go down the Cape until Monday, okay? So we're going to look forward to seeing all of you there.
Parking situation and...
Visit the website, wearmilton.org, and that will have all the updated information on parking.
But there's shuttle buses...
We'll be shuttled from Laverre, we'll have shuttle from there, everything, so, and the shuttle's worked out well last, the last couple of years, so we're confident there'll be...
Plenty of parking.
You've got your jacket on.
Got my Wham jacket on.
There you go.
Okay, we're going to call this a Wham Jam.
I don't know whether you know about it, but Fox, Fox 25 is coming for their zip trip. Is that going to be before the...
Well, I was going to announce that on my town administrator's report.
I know, I know, but I thought this would be an appropriate time.
But we are, it's going to be a great weekend.
Because if we announce that on Fox 25, we're going to get tons of people, I think.
Yes, and we have mentioned that to Gene Levangia of Fox 25 News, and he's supposed to be reaching out to We Are Milton. Fox 25 News is doing their zip trip Friday morning, June 26th, and they'll be here setting June 26th, and they'll be here setting up at 4:00 AM, and we'll be ready for the show at 5:00 AM, and-
Will they be right here in front of you?
They, they haven't picked the location yet, they're still-
Hutchinson Field would be a great spot.
That's right.
Yeah, they're looking at a couple of different locations, they, they scouted here, they scouted Cunningham Park, so they've scouted a few different, I don't have the exact location, just-
I know the stage arrives Friday afternoon.
It'll be too late for it, yeah. Congratulations.
Thank you for your support for this event.
Thank you.
Well, thank you both for all of your work on this, you're doing awfully-
Thank you, awfully exciting.
Fun, but it's a lot of work.
A shout-out to the Copeland Foundation for-
Again.
I wasn't gonna leave before we said that, so thank you for that.
We wouldn't be here, I mean, really.
This is all due to the Copeland Family Foundation and their generosity for us for making this happen, so we're grateful and-
It's about community, you know, and so we can resolve differences in the community at a big event like this, maybe-
Everyone comes together.
Maybe some people, and maybe things will happen that we'll all be happy with. So, hey, we're looking forward to it, appreciate what you're doing, and we'll see you on the weekend of the 27th, 28th.
That's great.
Thank you, very much.
Thank you.
Okay, anybody else with citizens speak? Okay, St. Nun, move on to item six, which is a CAC update from Cindy Christensen. Hi, Cindy.
Hi. All right, I'm Cindy Christensen, I'm the recently appointed Logan, Logan, CAC rep. My understanding is that they're calling the old group, the Logan CAC, and the new group, the Masport CAC.
Okay.
So, Caroline is Masport on Logan.
I don't know if you have to switch that over to get the screen up there.
So, what I wanna, there's three things that I prepared to talk about today, and the first is what's going on as far as the Logan CAC. The second is information on how one can make noise complaints, and the third is the recent hearing on the 4L RNFs. It occurred to me, we can make my, I know you probably can't see some of this, but we can make these slides available. So, what's going on with the, the current Logan CAC? This, this is part of the Bland, what's called the Bland Study, and the final part of the Bland Study, the Phase Three, is to do some testing so that there's more equitable distribution of flights around Logan Airport. Currently, the, the CAC is doing, is working with the FAA and a consultant in Masport on Test Two, so I'm coming in kind of in the middle of Test Two. They've done Test One, and I just wanna give a brief update on what Test One was about, and then I'll tell you a little bit more about Test Two. This first slide or page is meant to look confusing, because what I want to point out is how difficult it is for anybody who's CAC to interpret what gets thrown at them. So, what I did when I got this, this was back a while ago, I created a different way of looking at this that I hope is easier for people to understand. So, what happened in Test One of the Bland, the purpose of Test One was to try to see if the FAA, the tower at Logan Airport, could change configurations so that the, the runways that they use to, to end a day were not the same that they used the next morning. So, the idea was, let's let people go to sleep at night, or if we don't let people go to sleep at night until midnight or something like that, let's not wake them up the next morning. So, that was the rule, the, what they were trying to accomplish in Test One. Test Two gets a little bit more complicated. Anyway, back to Test One, what they came up with was something like this. They have six configurations. What I'm showing here is their configuration number one, and the top box that's in blue shows four slash nine. The four represents arrivals, the runway for arrivals, the nine for departures. So, configuration number one would be four for arrivals, those fly over Milton, and nine for departures. So, if they were using four for arrivals, nine for departures, the next morning, their first choice to, to work towards this goal would be to choose the configuration 33 for arrivals, 27 for departures, or flipping that. Now, that would be their first choice, and they would kinda get bonus points if they, if they were able to do that. Their, their second choice, which they sometimes have to go to if wind is a problem, that kind of thing, would be 27 for arrivals, 22 for departures, and their third choice would be 15 for arrivals, nine for departures. The problem appears in the, the first two levels. So, when they're using nine for arrivals at midnight, and then they switch to their first choice in the morning, 33 for arrivals, 27 for departures, or 27 for departures, 33 for arrivals, the 27ths and the 33 departures both go over Milton. So, many of the people who have put up with the arrivals until midnight could be awakened in the morning by departures. This mainly happens over in the middle to western part of Milton, but the, the FAA would consider that a successful configuration change. So, that's one thing that I'm trying to work on, making sure gets changed, is that the, there's many people, just because they've changed configurations, there's many people in Milton who are suffering up until they can't go to sleep at night, and then they're, they're awake at 5:30 in the morning. So, as I mentioned, there's six of these configurations, and you can see why it kinda gets complicated, but, but this is, this is what they were doing with the, the first test period. There were a few little corrections that I found, which the consultant is now corrected in their Test One. The only, out of six configurations and changes, the only one that, that is beneficial to Milton is this configuration number six, where 15s are used for arrivals, nine for departures. The problem with this is that it's, that configuration is used about 2% of the time, and so, as you see, that there's nothing over Milton in this first choice row, row here, there's nothing over, the second choice, we have Milton departures, the third choice, Milton arrivals, but this is our, our best bet, and it gets used very little. So, this is one of the things. The Test One period is, is completed, and I've got some statistics on that to show you. So, there were 56 days in the Test Number One period, it ran from November 12th to January 8th. This is the, the time of the year when we get northwest winds a lot, which means that the 27 departures and the 33L departures are being used a lot, and the fours are being used a lot less. Out of those 56 days, over half of the days, we had both arrivals or departures at night, and then waking up residents in Milton in the morning.
Cindy, one quick question. On, on those days that we had night and morning over Milton, were they in the same area of Milton?
Yes, that, yeah, I can show you, I think I've got a map. So, this, if it's large enough, yeah, this is a map of the flights over Milton. The, this one, the, the two dashed lines are the departures. This one that my pointer is, is following is the 27 departures, and the one down here is the 33L departure. Now, there's a, a one nautical mile corridor on either side of this, and that's quite substantial. We, I should mention, Alan Bishop from DPW has been working with me very hard for about a week now to get these nice maps ready for us, they were just done this afternoon. We also have the map with corridors, which basically would show you, you know, that the corridor for 27 overlaps with the corridor for 33L. So, basically, anybody in Milton from about here to here, if the pilots are following the RNAV pass, are being, are having low-flying departures flying over them. The departures start on 27, they, and, yeah, 27, they start at about 3,500 feet, and then they're climbing, which, the general rule of thumb for departures, so if you have a departure at the same level as an arrival, the departure is about 10 times louder because of the revving up of the, the engine. Now, one of the other problems that Milton seems to have is that they are a lot of what they call the cowboy pilots, so they don't necessarily follow the path, and there's a lot of evidence to show that this new, this latest 33L departure, which they're supposed to come down here to this, this point, this GPS point called Seabear, they actually turn at Kira, the point Kira, and so, more and more people along the 27 path are being affected than if the pilots were following the, the exact route. So, where the eastern side of, of the, of Milton got a bit of a break during these 56 days, it was really rough on the people, getting the departures. So, I'll go back to these data. Another 19, so 30 had, had it going to bed, waking up, another 19 days, they had it either one of those two. There were only seven days of the 56 where the night-day periods were what would have been called successful, if Milton got to, to define success as no arrivals or departures both over us. And again, the northwest winds were, were prominent during this time. So, that, that's kind of the summary of Test One, and I don't know how effective I can be at getting the CAC to go back and revisit Test One. I gave them some of this information back when they were still looking at it, but I'm not sure any of it got incorporated. But moving on for the purpose of tonight, to the, to what's going on with Test Two. Test Two started May 15th of this year. It incorporates and continues the Test One element of switching between the night and the morning, but now they're also trying to switch two other times during the day, at nine, around 9:30 AM and 2:30 PM. And the idea behind this is that you don't have a full day of, of airplanes going over your home. Now, just from my own experience, because I've been working at home a lot during the, the month of May, they're not being very successful at this. I haven't seen the data yet, but if, if I were keeping score, I would say they're not doing a great job of switching twice during the day. The other problem with this that deserves more of my attention and, and analysis is that you, you can kinda see what they're doing. They're gonna start with some runway in the morning, they wanna change that at 9:30. The, the heavy part of the day is, is early, you know, starting about 5:00, 5:30. They're gonna change that at 9:30, and then change it again at 2:30 when things pick up again. So, we could get a break. My guess is what they've got in their mind is, we'll give Milton maybe a break between 9:30 and 2:30, and then we'll hit 'em up again when the times, when there's a lot of, of planes. But, but that's just a guess on my part. I don't, I haven't seen the data yet. So, Test Two utilizes a similar approach to Test One, in that it relies on FAA and Masport to make the decisions about what they change to. What I've already noticed in my few weeks as being CAC is that they, FAA and Masport just decide if they wanna listen to the CAC or not. There's, there's not a whole lot of cooperation, you know, it's, it's almost like we're the, we're the stepchild, and they're, they're the two parents, and if we say we want two popsicles, they get to say no. So, Test Two started in May 11th, and it's scheduled to last three to six months. After Test Two, there's supposed to be two more test periods, and I don't have information right now on what those are. So, that's the update on the, the new role that I'm taking. There's a CAC meeting about this in early July, so I can report more then. The next thing I wanted to mention is that we encourage people to make complaints to Masport and the FAA when they're disturbed by the noises so, from the planes. So, what this table is showing is, there's columns of number of reported complaints in 2014, and the number of callers in 2014. This is number of reports in 2013, number of callers in 2013, and then this goes back a decade to 2003, reports and callers, and these data come from Masport. So, the, there's about, there's 81 communities in 2014 that were, at least one resident called to complain. That was up from 74 in 2013, and 51, only 51 in 2003. What I've done here is I've sorted by the number of reports, with the largest community on top from the 2014 reports. So, you'll see Milton is up there. We had in 20, 2014, 2000, you can't see the number very well, 2,669 calls into the FAA complaining about the noise. Hull and Belmont are up there very close with us, but we really take the prize, unfortunately, with over 2,600 complaints from 192 callers. So, again, we can put this up on the town website, but there's, just so the people at home might, they probably can't see this very well, but there are two ways that one can file an official complaint with the FAA and Masport. One is online, and this has a link, but of course, it doesn't do anyone much good who's, who's watching this, but we will post it. The other is this phone call, so you can call in, you can say whatever you want, the planes are driving me crazy, or there's, you know, it's been two days now, whatever you want to do, and the FAA will respond to that.
Cindy, can you read the number, because I'm looking at the monitor over here, it's not coming up very well on the TV screen, so why don't we just read off the numbers in the, in the email address if you have it?
Um, yeah, this is a, a website, so-
Have you Googled it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Google Masport.
We'll put it on the website.
Yeah, we can put that one up.
It is on our website.
Yeah, the way I find it is I put Logan Airport Noise Monitor, and it, it comes up in a Google search. But the phone number is 617-561-3333, 561, sorry, 617-561-3333. And they answer during business hours, and you can leave a message that they will respond to on off-hours. I've also got my phone number and email address here. I, I have been getting a few phone calls, which I welcome. If anyone has questions, or if there's something I can do to try to help somebody, I can't get rid of the planes, but I can, I can help somebody file a complaint. My email address is clcmilton@gmail.com, and my phone number 617-322-9323. And we are going to be putting all of this information up on the town's website.
It went on the website today.
Did it go up today? Okay, great. And I just wanted to mention that, I know a lot of times people, you know, complaint is a bad word, but it really does help the town of Milton to make these legitimate complaints. If it's really too much for you, if you're losing sleep, losing work productivity, if your kids are being, being scared, or, or you're worried about the, the health effects from the planes, it really does help the town of Milton to make a complaint. So, there, it's a, it's a legitimate complaint to make, and I encourage people to do it. So, if there's no questions of those two topics, I wanted to move on to this, the latest information that we have about the, the changes coming to Milton. So, there, there recently was an FAA hearing back in the middle of May about two new flight paths over Milton, and I wanted to start off with a little bit of explanation. I wanted, wanted to give people some information on what has been going on with the technology within the FAA, why it's causing us problems, and, and just two of the terms that get thrown around a lot, the concentrated flight path RNAV and the noise metric DNL. I just have a couple of slides on that. But first, I wanted to mention that Milton's not alone in this concentration of, of flight paths going over our town. We do seem to be the hardest hit in the Logan area, but there's many communities across the nation who are dealing with this, too. This is an example of a webpage with a links to news articles and speaks from, talks from politicians on what they're trying to do in their own town. So, FAA's next-gen technology, this site claims is neither clean nor environmentally friendly. It says, "US Politicians and Residents Speak Out Against the Misery of Being Crop-Dusted by the FAA's Low-Altitude Next-Gen Flight Paths. The Health Effects, Loss of Sleep, Property Devaluation, and the Carcinogenic Air It Brings to the Environment and Cities." So, you can see, you can't read what's written underneath there, but you can see there's cities like Phoenix, Chicago, New York, Washington DC, California, Santa Cruz, even places outside of the US such as Germany. So, there is, there's a lot going on, and it, it seems to be caused by this new technology that the FAA is using. The next thing I wanted to mention was what, just make sure everyone understands what RNAVs and RNP's are, and if anything I say along the way, if, I, I know you guys are up to date on, on some of this terminology, but if you think the people listening might not know, then please stop me, because it is very confusing, and the stuff they throw at, at people, it's just amazing how, how difficult it is to understand. This is one graphic that shows quite- This is one graphic that shows quite well, I think, the change in, one of the aspects of the next-gen technology is that they're changing the way pilots fly. So, the graphic on the left is the conventional procedure. They figure out where they're going by ground-based locations, and you can see the graphic on the left has quite a wide blue corridor around it. The one in the middle is the, is an RNAV procedure, and this is part of the next-gen technology. They claim it increases airspace efficiency. What, these are waypoints like that, one that we saw on the map of Milton. The five, there are five letters, they get a location by latitude and longitude, and they're kind of these little invisible stations up in the sky. So, these are waypoints, is what they call them, waypoints. And if you notice that the corridor here is quite a bit smaller than the corridor from the conventional procedure. The next step over is what's called RNP, and even Milton hasn't talked about RNPs a lot. RNP requires additional software and technology inside the cockpit, and airlines like JetBlue have this capability. So, RNP, notice the corridor is even smaller now, but one of the things that I discovered just this week that I hope will someday be beneficial to Milton is that with RNPs, they're able to make, one of the things that they say is good about an RNP is they're able to make curved paths. Right now, with RNAVs, they start off about 10 miles out, and they need to come in on a straight path, and that's what we get in Milton. The, like I said, this is the first time I've heard this about RNPs was this week, is that they're capable of making these curved paths. So, it would be really nice if someday they could come in over the water, but I don't want to bring up any false hope. I do want to mention, though, we have a wonderful gentleman in town, Gene Brown, who I think you guys probably have heard of. He keeps statistics on runway use, and he mentioned to me, back in the 80s, I believe he told me, that they replaced some kind of technology, microwave technology, with this new next-gen technology. And one of the features of the microwave technology was supposed to be that you could have curved landings, and that that was, that feature was supposed to be migrate over to this new next-gen technology, and he didn't know for sure if it had. This document that I found does make it seem like that is something that they may have in the future. So, that's what an RNAV is, and RNP is just more narrow and fancier. They can fly planes closer together with the RNP also. So, the, the, in the Boston area, the RNAV started along these, so these are the dates of when they implemented RNAVs at Logan Airport. So, for the, if we go down here to Arrivals, which is the 4L, 4R, RNAV started in December of 2011. So, you can see from this that these are pretty recent dates, and so people who have said, "Well, I grew up here, they never bothered me," it might be that it's bothering someone who lives in that same house now because of the concentrated pass of these RNAVs. The 27 was updated in March of 2013, around the same time that they were implementing the 33L RNAV, those are the two departure ones. So, what they're doing now, what this hearing was about, was making a new RNAV path, actually two RNAV paths for the runway four left. Okay, the noise metric DNL, because that's going to come up in some other slides. This is how Masport and the FAA calculates noise. So, because I teach statistics, I use this little graphic a lot. The, when you have, you know, we have silent periods with planes, and then we have peaks of noise, and anytime you start averaging, which they do, averaging the noise levels, you remove kind of the pain. You remove the nice times, the quiet times, but you also remove the pain. So, the little saying in statistics is you have your head in the snow, your feet in the fire, but on average, what are you complaining about? And that's similar to what's happening with the DNL noise metric. Now, this noise, the DNL, it stands for day-night level, and it's mandated, Congress mandated this back in 1973, I believe it was. So, that FAA uses it, and they use it because they have to use it. So, this is just a little graphic trying to show that this might be where your noise level is when you're enjoying the conversation with your neighbor, but then a plane goes by, it peaks, but on average, you're, you should be just fine. So, that's the line here is just showing an average. What they do is they average over a day, and then they take the 365 days and average over a year. So, you can imagine, it's just not a very good metric. It's just not. Masport attempts to reduce noise by installing insulation in windows, blah, 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 but in order to get those benefits from Masport, you have to have a DNL level of 65 or greater. And the, they measure these DNPs by census blocks, so very small units, and no one in Milton has over 55 decibel estimate, and that happens to be in the middle of the Napa River where nobody lives. So, the FAA loves this 65 DNL value, and they try to reduce how many people are under it. This graphic shows that in 1990, a whole lot of people had DNL 65 or higher, and 2000, still quite a few, but look what happens in 2012. And it's all because of the concentrated paths. They're taking away, they're just piling it all up on some people and removing the numbers. So, if you count the number of people, it's really gone down. They like to do these noise contours, so this yellow line is showing what the area around Logan that was, what is that, 2000, and how it's shrunk in 2012. So, they, this is also kind of recent news. Even the FAA seems to finally be getting that this DNL metric is not the best thing in the world. They announced this, I guess, last month, May, that they're going to evaluate whether or not it's working for them. I'm a little bit suspicious of it, but they're going to, they're going to evaluate the DNL How DNL plays into what is going on for us with the 4L is that the significance is defined in terms of DNL. So, a DNL of 1.5 or higher change from something that they're going to do, like put in new RNAVs over Milton, would be something that would force them to have to do an environmental assessment, but only if you started off at being 65 DNL or higher. If you're between 60 and 65, your increase would have to be 3 decibels, and it would have to be 5 decibels if it's, if your DNL is between 45 and 60. So, remember I said all of Milton is 55 or less? So, this new procedure that they're putting in, in order for them to have to do more of an environmental assessment, we would have to have our average DNPs go up by 5, which is just a huge amount when it's averaged over a year's time. So, now, I'll move on to some information about the hearing that several of us, including Katie, attended, and some of our elected officials at the state level also. So, this is information that I'll just read briefly. The FAA held an invitation-only hearing on May 18th to present information on two new RNAV arrival flight paths over Milton. We'll be putting up copies of the presentation on the town website. We'll also be adding an unofficial map of the flight paths. It's unofficial because we've created it, although we've used information from the FAA to create it. So, we know the waypoint, latitude, longitude, and things like that. The two new RNAV paths both go into runway four left, we call it 4L, and it is meant to move some of the planes that use four right over to 4L. One of the 4L RNAV paths is close to the Milton-Hide Park line. The other runs almost parallel to the arrival path to four. Many Milton residents will have a substantial number of arrivals on both sides of their home with these new paths, and residents burdened by the departure pass over our town will have more disturbances. The FAA presentations report that no new operations will be added. So, what they mean by that is that however many planes they plan on landing on the fours will not increase. So, they're not planning on adding new, increasing the number of flights. However, Milton has reason to expect an increased use of 4R and 4L runways. I just think it's going to happen. Many times, the Logan runway configuration choice is 4R or 4L for arrivals because of high demand. These arrival runways also are the calm-wind runways, which increase their use. The two additional RNAVs will bring Milton's total to five concentrated highways in the sky over our town. Residents have legitimate concerns about noise, health, property values, and their quality of life because of the saturated skies. So, this, the maps are quite high-density, so I wanted to separate it out, but let me just try to go over as quickly as I can what these new paths are. So, there's Milton, and again, each of these has about a one-mile corridor on either side. This one is the 4R. This is the one that gets, that they're using right now. They love to use the 4R, and there's nothing that's due to change about it, other than that they're planning on moving some of the planes off of it and onto the 4Ls. There's two RNAVs that they're implementing for the 4L. Let me talk about the one along the western side, along the Hyde Park side first. This is the one that JetBlue came up with, and they call it a visual RNAV. Currently, it's only for JetBlue to use, but it is, they mentioned at the hearing that other airlines will be kicking in and starting to use this, too. What's unusual about this 4L visual RNAV, it goes along the Milton-Hide Park line, but there's also this other point that starts here in the middle of the Napa River, and that's part of the visual. So, what my understanding is, from corresponding with one of the JetBlue pilots, is that some planes, like if they're coming in from over here, they'll line up here and go from this waypoint, Hockey, up to Farmer, and they'll just go right into 4L that way. However, if somebody is kind of coming from over here, and 4R is too congested, they can set their sight on this Witter waypoint. So, that would mean crossing over Milton, basically anywhere they wanted, and then they eventually come in here and join this path at, I don't know what that might be, Schmidt, we'll call it Schmidt, and then go on into 4L. So, this is an unusual arrival path in that it's got this little short piece here that puts them on the RNAV path, but over here, they are not on a particular path. Now, this RNAV is actually the one that's going to get the heavier use of the two by prediction. So, that's the 4L visual path. The 4L GPS, what they're calling 4L GPS, we do not have the exact locations for, but we use their maps to come up with an approximate path. And you can see, it's not exactly parallel, but it becomes closer and closer to being parallel to the 4R as you get closer to the airport. Now, the 4L GPS was something that came out of the blue. We just learned last night that the CAC did not know about this, and we actually don't know why. But this is the GPS, and it's projected to get some of the flights from the 4R, but not as many as the one on the western side. So, here's some.
Cindy, I honestly don't want to cut you short.
Okay.
Could we wrap it in a few, just because we have such a long agenda.
Yeah, no, that's fine. I was hoping you would tell me if this is going on too long, because we can put these slides up.
Sure.
Yeah, this just shows, let me go right to the graphic, because a picture's always easier to understand. These are the number of arrivals to 4L and 4R by year, and you can, the blue is the 4L. Then, this has been without any RNAV path. This is what has happened over the years. This, if we looked at just 2013 and 2014, and we use their projected numbers, this is the way it would look. This is what you see in the graph above, but here's what we should focus on here. The path on the western side of Milton would go up almost double the number of paths. This is the one that we don't have the waypoints for, it's just kind of down the middle of Milton, it's going to get a few, and you'll notice that the bar graph here for the 4R This is a graphic that just shows, over the years, the fours get about 4,489 arrivals per month. That's a lot. Yeah. I will skip health and air quality concerns. I'll skip why I think this is happening to Milton, but I'd be happy to tell you some other time. There's some slides that, from the presentations, that go over these, the NEPA requirements that will be quite important for town council and for the Airplane Noise Advisory Committee to be up on definition.